This is the Cochise County Board of Supervisors regular board meeting for Tuesday, January 7th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. Board of Supervisors hearing room, 1415 Melody Lane, Building 2, Bisbee, Arizona. Somebody care to make me louder? Testing.
And people can hear us on the internet?
Or they say more, Laura.
There's a lot of people that shoot guns in this audience, so you gotta, you gotta up the volume.
Okay. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the state of Arizona, and to your devotion of which is one nation under God, indivisible, liberated and just as one.
Thank you, please be seated. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. The board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the board's attorney or on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS Roll call. District 1 Crosby is present. District 2?
Kathleen Gomez is present.
And District 3?
Frank Antonori present.
Okay. Members of the public may attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams, computer or mobile app or via phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714, conference ID 469-669-914. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda to speak on an agenda item or during call of the public. Complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board by 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published. This means that some presentation material displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. And first on the list for today is a presentation of Mr. Paul Correa. Do you have the presentation for us today?
The presentation was part of the packet of materials.
Okay, so do you, do you expect to speak to us this morning?
I do.
Okay.
As short as I can. This is an introduction to the open meeting law which applies to this meeting and any meetings of a quorum of the board of supervisors.
Can everybody hear? Can you hear me? Sorry.
How about now? I probably have to have it right up against.
So I use two microphones.
Right. Okay, so the open meeting law is, there's a part of that attached in your packet, and that is ARS 48-431. I would encourage you all to go through that chapter of the title on your own, and I'm not going to be citing chapter or verse now, but just highlight the key points. So the open meeting law requires that all meetings of the public, of any public body shall be public meetings, and all persons so desiring shall be permitted to attend and listen to the deliberation and proceedings. All legal action of public bodies shall occur during a public meeting. That's ARS 341.01. ARS 38-431 has definitions, and these are the key things that are the operative terms in open meeting laws if you understand it. One is what is a meeting. Two is what is a legal action, and those terms are defined in the definition section. So it's a well put together statute. And then there's a whole section about what is notice. So a meeting, an action, a notice, those are the key things. Anytime that two of y'all meet, that's a quorum, so that constitutes a meeting. And our statute has a particular definition of that to include electronic meetings. So if Supervisor Antonori texts Supervisor Crosby, and they have some agreement or statement about a vote, and then that's texted Supervisor Gomez, you've had a meeting even though you weren't all together in the same room. That's the idea behind that. So what is an action? Any legal action. There is a definition here. Legal action means a collective decision, commitment, or promise made by a public body, and that's promise about the business of the county. So in that example that I gave, if there was some sort of an accord between any two of y'all to vote a certain way, say to approve a contract or something like that, well, you've had a meeting, a quorum is met and made a decision. So that kind of deliberation discussion or decision making is a legal action, and the public has a right to have that done in the public's eyes. So this is the public policy behind the open meeting law. It's been said that sunshine is the best disinfectant, and it is a feature of our form of Republican government that we have actions taken by a public body under the oversight and view of the entire public. It is a government of we, the people, and our electeds all serve the people. So that is the purpose and the policy behind the open meeting law. It's pretty fundamental to our Republican form of government. That's why there's a public policy section at the end of this chapter that says anytime there's a question about whether something should be done in public, it should be done in public. That's going to be a broad interpretation and application of the statute. All right. I think I've covered those, those three main points. I'm not going to go into detail about what the notice requirements are, but a public meeting, if it has to be a public meeting, needs 40 hours of notice at a minimum under the statute. I've got that right. 20, I'm sorry, 24 hours. The notice has to be written so that you would work with county admin to get a notice put together. Tom's very familiar with that. And it has to be specific enough that members of the public get the opportunity to know what is going to be discussed and deliberated in any possible action, and choose to attend and participate. That's one of the, one of the purposes of the open meeting laws, so the public then has a chance to involve itself if it's of interest to them. Agenda, so the written notice. Include, the written notice would include an agenda, and that is specified in another section of the statute in 431.02. If it's not on the agenda, then the public body should not discuss a matter, right? So this happens that things will come up, they're relevant in some way, but they're not, they're not noticed in a manner that the public would know you were going to talk about it. The appropriate action then is to put it on a future agenda, something that's specific. Yeah, and again, that's, the public policy served by the notice and the agenda is to allow the constituents, the public, the citizens of the county to participate and know what is going to be talked about. Briefly on call to the public, it is not something that's mandatory under the statute. There's no set time limit. It is a power of the board of supervisors to set a reasonable time and manner restriction on call to the public if they choose to allow it. You could have an open call to the public. Traditionally, we've done that in this county where anybody can talk about anything that relates to the county, within the jurisdiction of this board. That's what's appropriate to discuss at the call to the public. You can limit it in time, you know, we, I think we've done three minutes, it could be less than that. Sometimes if it's a very crowded room and you want to make a change on the fly, that is permissible because it's within the discretion of power of the board to setting that up. A couple of points that come up. I'm sorry, let me back up. There's an alternative, right? You could also have call to the public that isn't open, but you ask the public to identify that there's an agenda item they want to speak to, and then you open that up to the public so they can talk only about specific items that are on the agenda. That's another option. When we have open call to the public, it has happened, it, while I've been here, that a member of the public will want to address a action of a supervisor specifically, or some other item that is of interest to a particular supervisor. And the supervisor then has an opportunity to respond to that on topic, not going into new topics, but to respond to the comment or question that was raised by a member of the public. The process that we follow is after all of the members of the public have had a chance to speak and the call to the public is closed, then a particular supervisor could say to the chair, you know, I would like to respond to a comment, and then respond. You can also, in response to a statement or question from the public, ask staff to study a question, why isn't this person's road being maintained, you know, where is that on schedule, would be an appropriate type of question. Or say, you know, we heard in the call to the public, somebody's interested in this issue, we want to set it for a work session later, and you can in the, the meeting indicate to the county administrators that you want that set up so that you can come back and revisit it, or put it on another public meeting agenda. All right, so why do we have it, open meeting law, other than public policy? First, it's that, that we want the public to have the opportunity to participate, and it is vital to how our government works. Second, there are reasons to follow open meeting law that matter to the, the public fisc and to the private fisc of the individual supervisors. If there is a violation of the open meeting law, per statute, any decision that was made in a private discussion is null and void, but that's not a self-executing rule. In other words, if there was, say, some accidental, you know, accord that happened in casual conversation between two supervisors, and somebody learned about it and was disgruntled, it doesn't automatically become null and void until somebody complains and there's an investigation and litigation. And that can happen a number of ways. Under the statute, the investigation duty falls to the county attorney or to the state's attorney general. That's one way. The other way is that any member of the public can bring a complaint about an open meeting law violation and prosecute it on behalf of all of the other citizens of the county. And that has happened in the very recent history of the county. So what that means is it's time consuming, it's bothersome, some, you know, action that was taken now has to be scrutinized and revisited, and it will cost attorney's fees probably at the end if, if the county does not prevail. And either way, it's going to cost the county, either the county attorney's time or a county attorney that's hired to defend that. So it becomes a bit of a mess, and it's better just to do it right the first time. Tom, you remember Supervisor Crosby, the pack call debacle, right? And this was what was charged as an open meeting law violation against the county board supervisors. And I think it took us about three years and at the end.
Three years and four months.
And at the end, we paid, you know, some money to the attorneys, so that is something to avoid. In addition to that, there are penalty provisions in the open meeting law, so if there's a violation, it's a knowing violation, there's a penalty, I think of around 500 bucks, and then for additional knowing violations, the penalty goes up. And by statute, that is not paid by the county taxpayers, but by the individuals who violated the open meeting law. By the way, the county attorney, one of our jobs also is to investigate complaints that are brought by the city of Wilcox or the city of Sierra Vista. They can complain to us and ask us to make some calls and do some investigation and give them some, a conclusion about whether we found an open meeting law violation or not. So yeah, that, those kind of penalties could be part of either a investigation and civil prosecution by the state attorney general or by a private individual. Either way, you're in court and you're exposed to the potential liability out of pocket for these kind of fines. And you can be exposed to individual liability for the attorneys, which is a lot more than the fines. So again, better to do things by the numbers the first time and avoid all that. They have to be knowing violations, and so you may ask, well, what is knowing? It's a standard of proving that you knew or should have known based on some facts. It doesn't have to be proven beyond a reasonable doubt, preponderance is enough. So it's not a defense that you want to have to rely on, you'd rather just not be in the situation in the first place. There is also a penalty in the statute that says that when there's a finding that there have been knowing violations by a public official, and this applies to public officials, right, not just the county boards and supervisors. That public official can be removed from office. That is one of the remedies available to a court to, to impose as a penalty for violations that are known. Okay, so oops, you accidentally like had a discussion and it seems like there was an accord, didn't mean to, what do you do? There is a provision to allow ratification of decisions that are made in violation of the open meeting law. Just a couple of points about that. One, a ratification has to be done within 30 days that you become aware of the violation. And two, this is in case law, there needs to be a presentation as part of that ratification process of this is the meeting that we had, this is what was discussed, this was the date that it occurred and who was there, so that the public, you know, actually has information about what happened. And then you vote to, or bring a motion, deliberate, do the whole process formally, and you can then ratify an action that was taken. So that's my presentation. It's not a work session, and I don't want to like entertain questions and get into legal advice and discussion, but if you have any questions, you can come individually. If you want to ask questions as a group, let's do that in a work session where we can go into executive session. All right, congratulations again.
Thank you, Mr. Correa. I found your advice to be very accurate. I also agree that the open meeting laws are extremely important, and myself and my colleagues should frequently study the ARSs about those issues as well as anything else that's going to come before you because there's going to be a very wide variety of issues that have to do with the ARSs. Next is the presentation acknowledging Dan DeShawn, Emergency Management Director for his successful credentialing as a Type III All-Hazard Operations Section Chief with the Arizona Qualification System, the AQSS. Ms. Gilman, would you care to present for Mr. DeShawn?
Absolutely. Just to let the board know, this is a qualification that Mr. DeShawn received through his training, knowledge, and experience to perform the duties of an All-Hazard Operations Section Chief. Mr. DeShawn is our Emergency Management Services Director, and we just want to recognize him
Got, got time for a photo? Next on our agenda is call to the public, and it seems like a number one on the list is Mr. Radford Hyde. Mr. Hyde, would you care to address us this morning?
Hi, my name is Radford Hyde. Can you guys hear me okay? My name is Radford Hyde. How do I turn this up? I'm going to hurt my back. You don't hear me at all? Okay. How about this? So, welcome new supervisors, welcome back, Mr. Crosby. It's really shocking to me that I'm not looking at suspected communist and a rhino and a conservative patriot. Instead, I'm looking at what I consider to be three conservative patriots. So now I think we have good representation for the political leanings of this county, and I think most of us here are thrilled to death, and couldn't be happier. So what I want to talk about is election integrity, and I think it's time, since the previous board members did not ever allow it to be brought back up, to have the experts talk about the problems with the ESNS machines that we used in the 2022 election, I'm going to remind everybody that on the county Board of Supervisors website, in the Q and A from Mr. Chris Walachin, who is the Vice President and Chief Information Security Officer of ESNS, who came to give a dog and pony show for the new ESNS machines that the county was going to use for the 2024 election. By the way, he's, he's got a certification that he described as the golden certification for information security, which is CISSP, which I also have, which I also have certified ethical hacker, GAC penetration tester, Security Plus, GAC security leadership. I've been working in IT security for 20 years at least, and I don't think he knows more than I do on this topic, even though he's in that position. The question was posed to him, and it's posted on the website, did the accreditation of the lab that certified ESNS 6.0.4.0 used in Cochise in 2022 lapse before the election? And his answer, right on your website, is yes. I don't think anyone else will know any more about that than he does. So I think it's time to revisit the use of these machines. They're fraught with vulnerabilities, and I want to go on record as saying that even though Tricia Giradet gets up here and says that I claim that the election was rigged or there was some weirdness going on, I think that we have honorable people working in our elections department, and the people are not the problem. The people that were stuck with having to perform, is that my time, or may I have it extended a little bit?
Let's let you get another 30 seconds because it took you a while to get your microphone working.
Thank you. The machine problems that we had counting 35,000 mail-in ballots is just ridiculous. For 75 or so years before we had these machines, we were able to turn these things around with precinct voting, not voting centers, real ID, paper ballots and hand count, and I'm encouraging everyone to look at this again and see if we can get rid of this undue expense to the county, because there, I think they're going to want to spend a lot more money to try and get a lot more machines in order to count all the new votes. Thank you and welcome. And I'm okay for any questions after this meeting if you have any.
Next up is Kim Depew.
The right height for me, but it's not for Mr. Hyde. Good morning supervisors. My goodness, you hit the dais running, didn't you? Thank you for turning off the autopilot. I hope you'll continue to produce a draft agenda early so we can comment via email before these meetings. Today's consent agenda contains two letters of support for broadband service plans. Exactly what action does the phrase "work collaboratively" and "support efforts to develop broadband" commit the county to do? Does it refer to roadside rights-of-way permits? Does it suggest a waiver of zoning codes to erect communication sites or towers? It would be nice to know what the vague language means. Known as the BEAD Act, the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program is a bulky, paperwork-heavy law signed in November of 2021. Yeah, November of 2021. The budget is 42.5 billion. Rollout date is not until 2026. No connections have been made in the three years since it passed. In the meantime, the mapmakers and report compilation teams and consultants are the only ones using broadband and the $42 billion. At this rate, the technology fiber will change, and the program will have benefited no one except those administrators. Just wondering about this letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Cody Essery.
Morning, my name is Cody Essery. I'm signing Mickey Neil. Thank you supervisors for the opportunity to speak here today. I want to begin by commenting that the goals of the new board to cut wasteful government spending are not lost to me, and I believe I have an important aspect of county expense for you to consider. I'm here to comment on the proposed development of Davis Road. I want to begin by stating explicitly what the plan is as detailed by the road department in their 40-year plan as well as work session presentations. They plan to widen 23 miles of Davis Road from Highway 191 to Highway 80, from a two-lane rural road into a four-lane divided highway to service commercial traffic from the planned commercial port of entry in Douglas. While this may sound like a good investment initially, it's fraught with issues. To begin with, Cochise County could not begin to afford the cost of this. The current plan is to use grant money already secured to expand the section of Davis in between Highway 191 and Central Highway, which they are currently attempting to do. Then they plan to wait until the commercial port of entry opens, funnel the traffic to Davis Road, and use the influx, influx of traffic as evidence to beg the state or federal government for money to complete the remainder of the roadway. If you've ever driven down Davis Road, you can immediately recognize that it is not built for commercial traffic and can be extremely dangerous, especially considering that a majority of the roadway has no shoulder at all and routinely floods during monsoon season. The roadway would remain in this condition until the county could secure the funds and then spend years completing the work. In the meantime, county taxpayers would be on the hook for the expense of repairing and maintaining the roadway, which will be significantly damaged by the additional traffic. This is also not considering the amount of either easement purchases or government-directed land seizures that would occur. While the county owns frontage over most of Davis Road, they would need to at least double it to, to build a proposed roadway. This means seizing land from legacy ranchers all down Davis Road. Along with that concern is the topic of roadway maintenance. With the 23 miles of length will remain the same, the size of the area would double. Is that an additional budget addendum that the Board of Supervisors is willing to incur? All of this is being done while a commercial traffic corridor already exists. Highway 191 runs from Douglas to I-10. It is also a state highway, meaning that the county can work with the state instead of begging for money from. This roadway is also already built as a highway, meaning it would be easier to add to instead of a complete rebuild of its entirety as would be necessary on Davis Road. An added benefit is that the struggling communities of McNeil, Elfrida, Sunizona, Sunsites, Pierce, and Cochise would see some economic opportunities as a result instead of wasting those opportunities on pasture land. Another issue is the communities of Tombstone, St. David, and Benson. Is the plan to force large amounts of commercial traffic through downtown Tombstone, the school zone in St. David, and 4th Street in Benson?
Thank you. Mr. Dan LaChance, would you care to address this this morning?
Good morning supervisors. Can everybody hear me okay? I come here with profoundly renewed hope and to thank the three of you for demonstrating the courage and taking the time, energy, and commitment to represent the people of Cochise County. I thank you very much for that. There's four points I want to make. The people are way beyond fed up with overreaching, out of control, power, and tax crazed government, and we see you as the answer to that problem. You were elected to restore constitutional government in Cochise County. You three are the, are of the people, by the people, for the people, not of, by, and for the government. You are elected to protect our God-given rights above everything else. Those are life, liberty, freedom, pursuit of happiness, and self-determination. Limited government, I was very happy to hear this from Frank. You must work to limit the government in every possible way. Big government is the method of dictators to make free citizens into subjects. The people have spoken in this election. We want you to restore constitutional government, to follow the Constitution. You three beautifully swore to uphold and defend the constitutions of the United States and Arizona today, and so we're looking forward to working with each of you in order to do that, to accomplish that, because it's our relationship that will make that happen. Set a bonfire of freedom here in Cochise County that will spread to the rest of Arizona and perhaps to the entire country. Thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. So next is Ms. Melissa Avant from First Things First, Cochise Regional Partnership Council.
Hello, good morning. Congratulations to all the supervisors. I'm so happy to see you set in this position. Again, my name is Melissa Avant. I'm with, I have the honor to serve as the Regional Director of First Things First here at Cochise, and for the past, I would say, 16, 17 years. As we all know, First We provide a bunch of services and programs all throughout the county, and our revenue is declining. There will be hopefully new legislation coming up in this upcoming legislation, and we are looking at taxing additional luxury tax on vaping and nicotine. I would ask for your support. I would also ask for a work session at a later date to really dive into what First Things First does here in the county, and then also look forward to April with the proclamation of the Week of the Young Child. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Agenda Item Number One, and we have a speaker for Agenda Item One. Would you care to address us again, Mr. Hyde? Or did you just? Yeah, there he is. Okay.
Bradford Hyde from Sierra Vista. Thank you again. Agenda Item One and Two have to do with the election of Chair, and I think I'm fine giving this comment that, given what I know about all three of you, someone who gets elected, whoever it is, should take this election machine business seriously and start charging forth. I don't think there's a more pressing issue. It's got to get done quickly, and whoever gets elected Chair, I feel will be able to take that responsibility quickly in order to change this. So I feel comfortable with any of the three of you. So I was going to comment that my preference would be for Mr. Crosby, but given the circumstances, I'm comfortable with any of you, so good luck on the election.
Okay. Agenda Item Number One, I am going to read this one. Elect Tom Crosby as Vice Chairman to the Board of Supervisors effective January 7, 2025. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. So I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So I will be the Vice Chairman. Item Number Two, would you like to read item number two, please?
I'll let Frank Antonori as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors effective January 7, 2025.
Second. Is there any comments from the board? I have some comments. I've known Mr. Antonori for at least 15 years, maybe back to '08. I admire him very much. I put up 150 of his campaign signs in the snow, in the wind, and uphill both ways one time. Well, not the uphill both ways, but I think he will do a fabulous job leading Cochise County. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of electing Mr. Frank Antonori as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors effective January 7, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes.
Real quick, this is kind of funny because Mr. Crosby had, I think it was a constituent here, sorry.
Yeah.
Make this custom Special Forces gavel for me here. It's got my Bronze Star on it. I appreciate that. Thanks so much. But that'll be the new gavel going forward, so I appreciate it. Thanks so much. So it kind of foreshadowed. It's like the guy kind of figured it'd have a use for it someday. It's pretty good.
Better to wear it out than collect dust.
Yeah, all right. Thanks. So now, I got to take it over.
So we are now going to move on to the consent agenda, Items 3, 2 through 10. For this...
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept consent agenda items 3 through 10.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda before we move to approve? No? All right. Therefore, having a motion and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? 3-0 on that. The Chair says aye as well. All right. So next. So now we're going to do a public hearing. Do I hear a motion to enter a public hearing?
Madam Gomez, would you like to read number 11?
Number 11. Adopt zoning ordinance 25-01 to rezone tax parcel 102-53-017 from R-36 Residential District... Oops. I just went, let me go back there. One dwelling per 36,000 square feet to RU-4 Rural District, one dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Patrick Wilson.
Second.
All right. Having a seconded, I hereby open the public hearing for presenters. So I guess our first presenter will be Matthew Taylor. Is that the first presenter? Yep, Matthew Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. This is the staff presentation for Docket RZ 2423. An applicant initiated rezoning application to downzone property from R-36 to RU-4. The applicant again is Patrick Wilson. The property is located on Purdy Lane, APM 10253017. The requested zoning is RU-4, which is consistent with the designations of the comprehensive plan as well as the growth area. Current use of the property is none. The applicant intends to utilize the property for single-family residential development using the county's owner-builder amendment. Again, the property is located on Purdy Lane, approximately one-half mile east of Naco Highway and Supervisor District Number Two. Showing the surrounding zoning area to the north is already zoned rural. The area to the south is zoned R-36 and has been zoned R-36 since the '70s. One parcel was rezoned to general business back in the '80s. An image, drone image viewing south of the subject property, and another image viewing southeast of the subject property with Purdy Lane in the foreground. Section 2.63 of the zoning regulations identifies 15 factors to evaluate rezoning applications. In this particular case, nine factors apply to this downzone. Factors in favor of approval include complies with all applicable factors, of which there are nine applying. The request is compatible with the low-density residential growth pattern of the area. Downzone reduces the number of allowed principal dwellings. Well, staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners. Staff has not identified any factors not in favor of the application. Staff executed public notification between 15 and 20 November, publishing a legal advertisement, mailing notices, and posting the property as required by the zoning regulations. That included eight notices to owners within 300 feet, and again, there were no written responses and opposition were in favor. Based on the factors in favor of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of Docket RZ 2423 without conditions by a vote of 8 to 0 during its December 11, 2024 meeting. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff also recommends approval of Docket RZ 2423 without conditions, rezoning tax parcel 10253017 from R-36 to RU-4. And thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. That concludes staff's presentation of Docket RZ 2423.
All right. Are there any more presenters? None? All right. So I hereby close the public hearing.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, you have a question?
Yeah.
Question of time. We have a discussion next.
Well, is that when I should do it then?
Yeah, so we close the public hearing, and then the next is any further discussion?
There we go. Did the Planning and Zoning Committee, I'm sorry, I don't know if I understood, did they vote on this already? Or is it going to them after this?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gomez, yes, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote on this already in December, and they unanimously recommended approval of the downzone.
Okay. Thank you.
There's no cows and opposition. There's probably no neighbors out there, so I could see why there wasn't much opposition to the rezoning, so. So, okay, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I'm going to call for the question with regard to the adoption of zoning ordinance 2501 to rezone parcel 10253017 from R-36 Residential District 1 per dwelling per 36,000 square feet to RU-4 Rural District, one dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Patrick Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Chair says aye. So the motion passes 3-0. All right. Next, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number 12. Can I...
Mr. Chair, I move we approve grant agreement E5S5G01C with Arizona Department of Transportation Aeronautics ground for drainage improvements at the Cochise County Airport in Wilcox in the amount of $180,000 with a county match of $18,000.
Get a second?
Second.
All right. We have a presentation, Mr. Ann Coxworth from Development Services. We're going to explain the agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, members of the board. Cochise County owns two airports, and this is for the Cochise County Airport, which is located just northwest of the city of Wilcox. The entire airport is located in a flood hazard area, so this grant is important to improve the drainage of that airport. Also, the airport, the soils at the airport are very poor, which does allow for adequate drainage that often, often during rain events, backs up onto the taxiway. A.DOT did have additional money last year, about the same amount that is available or that is needed in order to improve the drainage for this airport. Excuse me, they contacted Development Services, and we told them we would be interested in this grant as long as the board approved it for that airport. So staff does recommend approval of this so we can move forward with this project. I can answer any question.
Any questions?
You know about this, right?
Yeah.
And so you're in agreement with it?
Well, so with regard to the airports close to the municipalities in the northern part of the county, it's a key airport, and you've got the one in Benson, of course, that they put a lot of money into and improved that one. So Wilcox needs to get that improved, and, you know, future down the road. It's a small, I mean, it's a bold airport, and it's also used sometimes during forest fires and stuff like that, so it's good to have a runway up there in case they need it. So I'm okay with it.
Okay, cool.
Yep. So that being said, so motions on the floor, let's call the question. All those in favor of approving item number 12, say aye.
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 Chair says aye. Motion passes 3-0. Next agenda item is Agenda Item Number 13. It's to approve an intergovernmental agreement between Cochise County and the city of Douglas for state-required testing and monitoring of the Bisbee Douglas International Water and Water Supply System in the amount of $2,190 per month. It will be effective January 1, 2025 through January 1, 2027, and we have a presenter, Darrell Crowley, will present. Sorry. Morning.
Just a little rundown on this. Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need a motion in a sec.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So is that Chair making the motion and Crosby? Okay, I made the motion.
How was that? Okay. I'm sorry. I got a little out of order. I'm rusty. I got to get up to speed here.
I understand.
So, okay.
What this is, is we operate the two wells to supply the DOC prison with water. The state requires us to have a certified water operator, and we hire, contract with the city of Douglas to do that. Basically, the rest.
So any questions? So we discussed this a little bit in the working session, and one of the things that we kind of agreed to is to look at passing the cost of this on to the primary water user that uses this water. So with the condition that that be the case, you know, I'd like to get some assurance that we bill the state because they're requiring the water to be tested and we have to go...
As it turns out, DOC is paying anywhere from $25,000 to $30,000 for that well. So those fees are included in that.
Yeah, but they've been, so this is an added expense that's been a result of ADQ asking us to test this water, correct?
Well, no, they don't do a whole lot of testing for us.
No, 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 but we're required to test the well? Who requires us to test the well?
Arizona Department of Water Resources and the E. Both.
Both of them, okay.
Yes, we have to respond to both of them.
So why is the fee going up to $2,190 a month?
Because as far as I know, the city of Douglas has a technician that goes out to those wells every day, seven days a week, 365 days a year.
Okay.
And it's just to monitor that one.
So what I'm getting at is we have an increased cost to the taxpayers that we could recoup by increasing, passing that cost on to the primary user. So again, this will come up as we look at that IGA with the prison, I guess, and consider adding this on as an additional cost to cover this cost. So I just want to make sure that we're still on top of that.
Yes, Chairman Antonori, I understand what your request is, and we will continue.
All right. I mean, I know that we have an agreement. It's probably good until a certain amount of time, but after such, when we revisit that, we need to include the additional cost to the counties as part of them paying for that well, using that well.
So you're telling me it's every day they go and test it? Is that testing for arsenic?
It's not really testing. It's just monitoring, make sure everything's working, making sure the deodorant system is still up, filed, and everything is working like it is.
I wonder if they do that for the Douglas residents every day?
Do they do? Yeah. It's part of being a water operator in the state of Arizona.
Okay. I agree, we should look at seeing if we can't, you know, have them pay the increase, pass it on, so we don't.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor, item number 13. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Chair says aye. Motion passes 3-0. Thanks, Darrell. All right. We're going to move on to item number 14. Do I have a motion to move number 14?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve amendments to Human Resources Policy 2230, Traumatic Events Counseling to Include 9/11 Dispatchers Required Due to the Transition of Southeastern Arizona Communication Center (SECOM) Employees to the County.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So we're going to have Ms. Jennifer Graham present and explain this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, members of the board. We currently have the traumatic events counseling policy as per state law for our employees who are eligible, such as deputies, constable, detention officers, and we do need to include 911 dispatchers now that we have added a number of them to our employees, and this amendment does just that. And as I indicated, is required by state law. As far as the fiscal impact, that is something that is unknown due to the fact that we are unaware of what traumatic events may occur, and 911 operators could very well be subjected to traumatic events through an auditory manner. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have in regards to this.
Sure. I've got a quick question, Ms. Graham. So the health insurance policies that's provided to the employees of the county for various things don't cover counseling for traumatic events or psychological counseling? It's not already included in what we're paying for the insurance for the employees?
This is specifically required by state law for us to provide a certain amount of counseling visits for this purpose, as well as they are not required to take time off. This must occur when they're on the clock, and so it's simply a matter of following state law, sir.
I don't see how that, having an insurance policy that provides access to a counselor would not be in compliance with state law. If they're able, if that counselor is covered by the insurance and they can go sit down and talk to and counsel somebody that's had a traumatic event, even if they're on the clock, I get it. That would comply with the statute.
There are very specific requirements for the individual who provides the counseling, and it is paid for by the county. It is not paid for by the individual in need of counseling.
So the county does do a healthcare match, so technically the county's still paying for healthcare because we pay that match of the employees' pay. So I get it. The odds of us using this is also considered relatively low. The odds of us using this is also considered relatively low, so.
We typically have two to three incidents per year historically during my time here.
But I mean, the request of someone to use this service is two to three times a year, or we just have two to three traumatic events per year?
No, the requests historically during my time in this role have been approximately two to three per year. However, as you are well aware, it's a wild world out there.
Yeah.
And we can't foresee the specific need for those of us or those that are providing these important services for our public safety.
Any other questions?
Mr. Crosby. Ms. Graham, is, are all county employees necessarily covered under county health insurance?
All full-time benefit-eligible employees have the option to sign up for our health insurance, sir.
Okay, but they don't have to, in my case, I'm not, because I have a different system. So somebody else that is a nine-one-one dispatcher may also not be under the county insurance.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so this would help them if they were not covered under the county's insurance in the potential redundancy that my colleague is talking about.
That is correct.
So, just like plain English, this is for the nine-eleven dispatchers while they're online and say a child dies while they're trying to talk to them, or it's incident like that, right?
That is correct.
And so to deal with the traumatic experience of having lost that person that they're talking to, whatever it may be, child, father, mother, whatever.
That is correct.
Correct, okay.
Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve Agenda Item Fourteen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye, motion passes three nothing, and then you're here for the next one as well.
Yes, sir.
So do I have a motion for Agenda Item Number Fifteen?
Okay, so, I motion to approve intergovernmental agreement. I, where are we on?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, oh my gosh, so a motion to approve amendments to Human Resources Policy two-two-three-six, leave of absence without pay.
Back to you, Ms. Gomez. Oh, I'm sorry, I had a motion, but I have a second.
Second.
All right, now back to you, Ms. Gomez.
Thank you, sir.
Grant.
In twenty twenty-three, the board approved a policy for leave of absence without pay to provide guidelines when this happens and how it happens and approvals that are necessary. Since twenty twenty-three, we've identified some areas where we didn't quite get it right, and we try to be as correct in our policies as far as processes. For example, there is currently the requirement that an employee use all of their paid time off prior taking leave of absence without pay, and this contradicts the requirements of those on military leave, and is not aligned with the Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act. In addition, we identified some of the benefits, the way they were being handled was not appropriate. We cannot have individuals contributing to, say, a nationwide retirement account during that time, and also forgive me. And it specifies that personals and personal leave and sick leave is not accrued during their time of leave of absence without pay. So simply trying to make sure that our employees fully understand the requirements for this and how Human Resources is going to handle their benefits while they are on a leave of absence without pay. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have and request your approval.
Any discussion?
Mr. Crosby, if somebody's under military provisions of this, and they exceed the six-month period, they're still not separated?
That is correct.
Okay, and, but, but they do not continue to accrue leave regardless, whether they're military or not, if they're, if they're if they're under, I should say, they're under military, they're not separated, but they are not continuing to accrue leave in either case, whether they're military or not.
We do provide two hundred and forty hours of military leave to employees every, I believe it's every two years, and so when an employee is in a paid status, which two hundred and forty hours of military leave would be in a paid status, they would accrue. However, once that employee who is deployed, for example, exceeds that two hundred and forty hours, then they would no longer be in a paid status, and it would be a leave without pay, and accrual of paid time off would stop.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question, so some employers, for basically the employer, I forgot the exact terminology, it's employer guard and reserve program that allows employers to pay the difference between whatever the member's National Guard pay is and their employer's salaries, a lot of employers pay the difference, does the county do that?
We do not.
We do not, so when they go on a deployment, they're receiving just their military pay?
They're receiving two hundred and forty hours of military leave, and once that two forty is exhausted, it is leave without pay.
Gotcha, okay. Any additional discussion?
No, sir.
All right, I have a motion on the floor to approve Agenda Item Number Fifteen. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair says aye, motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, item number sixteen, do I have a motion to move item sixteen?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve Human Resources Policy twenty-two thirty-seven, Employee Recognition and Awards as written in the attachment effective January seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion's moved, we have, Ms. Gilman will offer us a presentation on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This is a new policy for the Board of Supervisors to approve our employee recognition and awards. In the past, the county has had certain programs like our applause recognition and the cybersecurity awareness recognition, and a volunteer Cochise program where we recognize people who volunteer within the community when they provide that information to us. Those were not written into a policy, and so therefore, some and through the audit process, our auditors were concerned that we were recognizing people without a written document as to the criteria, as to why and how that recognition would be provided to the employees. We want to avoid any kind of taxable benefit to them through the IRS regulations, so we stipulate that such recognition should be of a de minimis value, less than fifty dollars. We also need to stipulate why this is in the public good because we want to avoid any conflict with the Arizona Gift Clause that we're gifting items to our employees, but rather, we're recognizing them for their achievements and for their service to the public as well as to the organization and our security.
Any questions, any discussion, I'm sorry, no, sir. Hearing, hearing none, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor of approving Agenda Item Number Sixteen, say aye.
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 Chair says aye, motion passes three zero, moving on. Do I have a motion for Agenda Item Number Seventeen?
I motion that we, the discussion of possible action regarding state and federal legislative matters listed or described in the attached County Supervisors Association Legislative Policy Committee Agenda, the Arizona Association of Counties Legislative Policy Committee Agenda, and the proposed state budget and other matters related thereto.
Second, and I have no comments.
Any, any other discussions, Gomez?
No. No.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve Agenda Item Seven, all those in favor, seventeen, I'm sorry, Agenda Item Seventeen, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes three zero. All right, next, we have a report by Ms. Gilman, the interim county administrator on recent and pending county matters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so this is an opportunity that I would like to give every meeting to share with the board, any upcoming calendar items that may, perhaps you've instructed us and let you know what's coming up, as well as some things that perhaps you haven't learned of before through our discussions, and I can tell you all at once. So, in the past, last week, you asked for several work sessions, so I just wanted to update the board that we will have a work session on the comprehensive plan on January twenty-ninth at ten AM, so that has appeared on your calendar. We are working on the jail district budget work session that you requested, there's a bit of a schedule coordination that has to go on between all of you as well as the sheriff's office. And then I'm looking at a presentation work session with the executive director of the Arizona County's Insurance Pool. She's going to come down from Phoenix on February twenty-sixth, so we'll learn more specifically related to Cochise County claims and the market related to the insurance that they provide to us. Others are still, for example, the IGAs and broadband and elections, we're still putting those together and formulating the agendas for those.
If I could just add on that with the, with regard to the IGA, so I was trying to see if there might be a system that we could start with, like maybe doing the federal IGAs first, then the state IGAs, and then maybe municipal IGAs next to sort of prioritize those, I don't know if any of my colleagues had a say in that, because I think we need to review all of the current agreements that the county has entered into. So I'm up on what we're signed up for and who we're paying and what we're paying and how much we're sharing and everything else, but there's quite a few from what I understand, so breaking it up by.
I believe that's up to you, and if you coordinate that with Ms. Gilman, then you can make.
All right, you guys are fine, I'll get with Ms. Gilman and how we could break it down to try to chop it up into easier jurisdictions, and then we could go jurisdiction by jurisdiction.
That makes a lot of sense.
So like, you know, one of my concerns is the IGAs for the port of entry. To understand where, you know, everything is, and because that's, you know, I mean, there's a lot of moving objects with that port of entry, and I think there's a room need to see if they're all connecting. So I'm definitely, I agree with you, we should do that.
Okay, all right, so we'll do that.
And then one last thing, I'll be attending the CSA Board Supervisors Association with Supervisor Gomez and with you, Mr. Chair, just to learn alongside you, I think there's information I can glean from it as well. And then in late January, the thirtieth, the thirty-first, I'll be attending the Cochise Combined Trust Annual Meeting. This is an annual meeting we have with our health benefits providers, and we learn about any changes coming for the employee health benefits and how that might impact or not impact our budget. So I'll provide more information and a briefing to the board after that. One last thing, it's kind of strange to be talking about that there's some reports that we may have some severe weather coming up this week, cold temperatures, possibly snow. I wanted to let the board know that we do have a protocol for that, should there be difficult road conditions or difficult entry into our facilities, that we would be concerned about the safety of the public coming here for ICE, that kind of thing, we first evaluate the situation, and then I will contact the Chair of the Board if there is any need to do any kind of early release or late open. But I'm hoping that it's a moderate weather pattern, and we don't have to deal with that.
When is this supposed to happen?
Uh, Wednesday, Thursday?
Tomorrow.
It's changing, so I'm hoping it kind of blows by and doesn't become anything, but since it's kind of a current event, I thought I'd let you know.
Yeah.
That includes my comments.
Any other comments, Ms. Gilman? That's it, all right, so then we're going to move on to the summary of current events, which is the time where each supervisor gets a brief opportunity to discuss issues related to their district, so we'll go with Mr. Crosby. Any report from District One?
Only my thanks again for everybody in attendance and everybody who was in attendance, thanks for being here and helping us celebrate and get kicked off.
All right, Ms. Gomez, any?
Um, just the same, I mean, down the road, I'm sure I'll have a lot to say about the different issues that I feel really strongly about. But again, thank you all for coming, and you know, we have an open door policy, want to be very accountable and transparent to you all, and we need your interaction and feedback always, so please know that. Thank you.
All right, and for myself, I'll mimic the same, we'll probably start filling this up as we get more and more input from our constituents here and get apprised of events that are occurring within our respective districts. So again, it's a pleasure for our very first official meeting together, I'd like to thank my, my two colleagues for that. And with that, I would like to advise the public that our next meeting is going to be held on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five at ten AM. The special meeting will be held here in the Board of Supervisors meeting room. And with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. So.
Second.
All right, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.